Good morning. Uh, we are here today for the April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, uh, council meeting here in the city of Chester. Uh, we will be led by our Madam Clerk with a pla- a prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And prior to that, I ask that if you have a cellphone, tablet, or any type of, type of device, please put that on silent, muted, or off. Madam Clerk?
O God almighty, wisdom and justice, for whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decree, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we preside. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, one God, in the book of the Constitution, justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Here.
West?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Present. Um, motion for approval of minutes?
One moment. Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. At this, um, moment, uh, we'll have public comments on, uh, action agenda items only. We ask that if you have a comment on the agenda items, please go to the microphone and state your name, and we have a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Bruce Marie-Holt, and I'm with Children's First, representing the Delaware County Lead Poisoning Prevention Coalition. As I mentioned at the last meeting, um, we are in favor of the lead, uh, prevention ordinance on, um, the agenda today. And just a few things we wanted to remind, I'm not going to go on, because we mentioned these last meeting. But, uh, lead paint was not banned in, in residential use till nineteen seventy-eight, and eighty-nine percent of the residential properties in Chester were built before nineteen eighty. That poisoning can cause permanent brain damage to children, especially children under six years of age. That can cause learning behaviors, hearing, and speech problems, and lead paint hazards in homes primarily rental units are the main sources of lead poisoning. So we urge you to, um, vote on the lead poisoning prevention ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, he and a searing, uh, no other comments on agenda items. I do want to remind the public that if you wish to address the council, um, after the resolutions and ordinances, please go sign in at the podium with your name and address, um, so that you may address the council. Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Angel Jimenez, seven fourteen East Seventh Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number two, Edward Logan, ten twenty-one Parker Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. Number three, April Snow Mosheras, three sixteen East Twentieth Street, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And number four, Anna Escalera, nine twenty-three McDowell Avenue, Chester, PA, nineteen oh thirteen. And whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Public Works, it has been determined the aforementioned individuals have met all other required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to install a handicap parking zone in the seven hundred block of East Seventh Street, in the one thousand block of Parker Street, in the three hundred block of East Twentieth Street, and in the nine hundred block of McDowell Avenue in the city of Chester.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the promotion of Kyle Battinieri from the position of corporal and or detective to the position of acting sergeant, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, with a ninety-day probationary period at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester hired Deniqua Plummer for the full-time purchasing manager, Department of Account and Finance, effective April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, for thirty-seven point five hours per week with no benefits and a sixty-day probationary period. And whereas said employment is contingent upon said individual successfully completing a sixty-day probation from date of hire. And whereas the city is required by law to offer said employee medical benefits after sixty consecutive days of employment, which is completed on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, father, if said employee fails to meet the job expectations within the sixty-day probation, said employee will no longer be eligible for the position and will be subject to termination from said position.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the transfer of Janelle Johnson from the position of permanent service manager, license and inspection department, to the position of human resource generalist in a resource department, effective April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, with a sixty-day probationary period with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas by resolution dated September tenth, nineteen seventy-two, the Housing Development Corporation of Chester authorized the Chester redevelopment authority to manage its properties located in the city of Chester. And whereas by resolution dated June twenty-second, nineteen ninety-five, the Chester City Council authorized the dissolution of the Chester redevelopment authority. And whereas upon the dissolution of the Chester redevelopment authority, control of all real property titled to or managed by the Chester redevelopment authority passed to the city of Chester. And whereas the city of Chester desires to return such real property titled to the Housing Development Corporation of Chester to productive use. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of the following parcels to the new redevelopment authority of the city of Chester for redevelopment purposes. Four twenty-one East Eighth Street, and that folio number would be forty-nine dash zero five dash zero zero two zero zero dash zero zero? Six oh four Potter Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero five dash zero one one five six dash zero zero? Seven twenty-three Potter Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero five dash zero one 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 seven dash zero zero? And two eighteen through two thirty Church Street, folio number forty-nine dash zero eight dash zero zero seven three nine dash zero zero?
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to prepare the specifications for the advertisement of bids for the sale of the following miscellaneous public works and fire equipment items through Minnesota bid. Number one, aluminum stormwater management pipe. Number two, dock and gangway. And number three, miscellaneous fire equipment. Father, it does hereby authorize the city engineer to advertise for the aforementioned bids.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby award the contract for ventilation improvements known as Project Twenty-One to DWD Mechanical Contractor Incorporated, one zero zero five Pedron Avenue, Moore MTA, one nine zero seven zero, for the cleaning of HVAC systems for Chester City Hall, for which responses were received through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, known as Co-Stars, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, known as Part A funds. Father, the city has complied with all Co-Stars bidding requirements. Father, the solicitor's office shall review and approve the purchase order and or contract, and the successful bidder shall furnish a performance bond in the full amount of the respective contract to the satisfaction of city council.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the city of Chester has commenced a public improvement project for the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge, known as the project. And whereas it has been determined, in order for the project to move forward, the city will have to enter a temporary easement for construction agreement for the real property located at five thirty Lloyd Street, owned by Wendell Nicholas Butler Junior and Tanya G. Butler. And whereas this will allow for the entry and re-entry of city employees, agents, and contractors to do any and all work necessary for the completion of the project. And whereas the city agrees to restore the area covered by the easement to a condition consistent with the balance of the property. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute the temporary easement for construction agreement to permit access to four hundred and fifty square feet of the real property located at five thirty Lloyd Street, owned by Wendell Nicholas Butler Junior and Tanya G. Butler, for the reconstruction of the Lloyd Street Bridge project. Father, it does authorize payment of the final settlement for this project by the Department of Account and Finance in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve entering into demolition fund agreement, DF dash twenty-three dash sixty-A for Delaware County Council Office of Housing and Community Development for the demolition of the filing blighted structures located within the city of Chester. Seven twenty-five Caldwell Street, seven twenty-seven Caldwell Street, seven twenty-nine Caldwell Street, seven thirty-one Caldwell Street, four twenty-seven Rose Street, four twenty-nine Rose Street, twenty-seven oh three Lehman Street, twenty-seven oh five Lehman Street, twenty-seven oh nine Lehman Street, and twenty-six oh one West Third Street. Father, it does hereby authorize a proper city official to execute all documents necessary for the completion of this project for and on behalf of the city.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. One moment, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Miss, where's Janelle?
I just want to, I just want to make note to the public, we have a, a resolution that was posted, uh, on, to the public website, and at our deliberative that we discussed, uh, with mayor and council, but we do not see it on our agenda today, um, but we will, uh, proceed forward, uh, with the, with the resolution.
Can you, can you indicate for today's agenda what that resolution is and reopen public comment on agenda items only? Since we're adding that?
Yes. Um.
Are you saying, let me just make sure I'm clear. Was it part of deliberative?
Yes.
Okay, so it just didn't, so maybe it's just not on the?
It's not on today's agenda, as I understand it, so the resolution is what?
Honorary sign, name change?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, so.
Honorary, go ahead, go ahead.
Can I ask the council to make a motion to amend today's agenda to include that resolution on today's agenda?
I move that we uh, make a motion or move, I move that we make a motion to include the resolution number seventy-four dash twenty twenty-three that, um, speaks about name change, honorary name change down by Frederick Douglass Christian School.
Is there a second?
A second. Roll call. Any questions? Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Now, can I request that a motion be made to reopen public comment on agenda items only based upon that amendment?
I move that we reopen, um, public comment, uh, for, um, this particular resolution.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Motion, moving, carry. Motion, moving, carry.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes, so at this moment, we will open up the microphone for public comments on this one agenda item only, uh, the agenda of the resolution is seventy, number seventy-four da- dash twenty twenty-three. Um, it looks like Frederick Douglass Christian School has petitioned the city to request a, a street, requesting the street in front of the school to be renamed. Uh, so we're looking to add an honorary sign on the streets, uh, portion of West Eighth Street between Edwards Street and Central Avenue. So we will open up the, the microphone with public comment. Uh. Oh, sorry, then the honorary designation name will be, or sign would say Frederick Douglas Way. See. Yes.
Just that one block there.
Yep. So, seeing or hearing no one go onto the podium for a comment on this agenda item, we will close it and move back to our program.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas Frederick Douglass Christian School, known as FDCF, has petitioned, petitioned the city requesting the street in front of the school be renamed. And whereas FDCF has dedicated years to the positive development of young minds and is committed to continuous improvement of our community through faith, love, and education. And whereas the city has reviewed their requests and would like to assist FDCF in continued commitment to our children. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a portion of West Eighth Street between Edwards Street and Central Avenue be given the honorary designation of Frederick Douglas Way. Father, it does authorize public works to install the honorary sign.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Account and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three and April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, attached heretofore and made apart era, subject to approval from the Department of the Council and Finance.
One moment. Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
No.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number three, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number three of twenty twenty-three, and ordinance, and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester nineteen seventy-eight has supplemented and amended to provide for the amendment of Article nine twenty-five entitled refuse collection. By amending the index to correct section nine two five point zero four to read as for mingling ashes, garbage, and rubbish. By amending section nine two five point zero two one entitled fees, updating the cubic feet of refuse collection, and updating section B and C of section nine two five point zero two three entitled delinquencies. By amending section nine two five point zero four entitled for mingling ashes, garbage, and rubbish. Providing for acceptable disposal method by amending section nine two five point zero five entitled acceptable receptacles, providing for the responsibility of providing receptacles and description of acceptable receptacles. By amending subsections C and E and adding new subsections F and G of section nine two five point zero seven, excuse me, nine two five point zero seven entitled refuse preparation for deposit or collection, providing for acceptable recycling containers and mattress placement by adding acceptable plastic bag placement and for multifamily property owner, owner receptacle placement by amending subsection C of section nine two five point zero eight entitled receptacle lid sanitation and condition, providing for minimal receptacle requirements by adding subsection A and adding subsection C and D of section nine two five point ten entitled receptacle placement for collection, providing for the proper place for receptacle placement identifying responsible for waste prior to collection and prohibiting privately contracted collectors from depositing municipal waste at the point of collection or in the right of way. Amending subsections A and B of section nine two five point twelve entitled maximum receptacles per residential unit.
Can I interject right now?
Yes.
The, the way this reads, there are the use of two sixty-five gallon refuse receptacles, and, and at the first reading and at deliberative meeting, there was a discussion that it should be three. So, that should read three as you, in the next sentence, or two, not two. Three receptacles. You see the next two sentences?
No, because, um, you're ahead of me and know what's going on.
Okay, well, when you get there, you'll see it, it should be three receptacles, not two.
All right, so. I was at the collection or in the right of way amending subsections A and B of section nine two five point twelve entitled maximum receptacles per residential unit, providing for the use of, instead of two, it's three?
Yes.
Sixty-five gallon refuse receptacles, amending section nine two five point one three entitled no holiday collection, providing for where to locate the holiday schedule. Amending subsection D of section nine two five point one five entitled separate collection of recyclable items for recycling purposes, providing for the placement of recyclable items. Amending subsection B of section nine two five point nine nine entitled noncompliance remedy by city penalty, providing identification of the proper party to authorize the city to abatement of a violation. And adding new sections nine two five point one zero zero through nine two five point one oh six, providing for private collection and disposal responsibility and collection. Transportation, the identification of approved disposal facilities, the disposal of personal waste and hazardous waste as defined by the Pennsylvania Solid Waste Management Act. Enforcement, ticket appeal requirements, severability, fines, violations, and penalties, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith. I move that we pass bill number three on its last and final reading with the noted change as mentioned by the solicitor from two receptacles to three.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question, a question, just a, a comment, just thanking council for the consideration of, uh, this ordinance, and you'll see there's many more ordinances that we have that we'll discuss today, uh, that are centered around, uh, the enforcement, code enforcement and the cleanliness of our city, of our community. This, uh, specific ordinance was really changing and updating uh, amount, a good amount of the language in the ordinance regarding acceptable, ac- acceptable receptacles. Um. Um, and we're, we're, we're looking to try to beautify the, well, something will beautify the city and unify the city with, uh, trash cans throughout the city of Chester to all little residents, uh, that it will be uniformed, have the same color, have the same emblems on them, um, that has a lid on them, and that's sixty-five gallons as well. Uh, so those, that's one of the many initiatives uh, that mayor and council and chief Leitner have been really working on over the past few months, uh, to try to see what ordinances that, that we have on the books, how can we, uh, have them better fit what we currently have or do to, to enforce those, uh, ordinances, uh, within our community, so. Uh, with that, Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number four, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number four of twenty twenty-three, and ordinance, and ordinance of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy-eight has supplemented and amended to enact Article seventeen fourteen entitled licensing residential rental units to provide for the establishment of rights and obligations of owners and occupants relating to residential rental units to provide for registration, licenses, and appeals process, enforcement and providing for the severability, repeller, codification, and effective date, and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number four on its last and final reading.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number five, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Ordinance number five of twenty twenty-three, and ordinance, and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to enact new Article seventeen fifteen entitled pre-sale inspection of residential properties and units of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester. Of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester nineteen seventy eight as supplemented and amended. To provide for the purpose and intent of all, excuse me, of requiring an inspection of all residential properties and units. Prior to the transfer of title and providing for the compliance and abatement of violations. Guarantee severability fees. And penalties for real property within the city of Chester and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number five on its last and final reading.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number six, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty three. Ordinance number six of twenty twenty three. And ordinance, and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Repelling Article eleven thirty one entitled lead poisoning control in its entirety. And enacting new Article seventeen sixteen of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania nineteen seventy eight. As supplemented and amended. Entitled their poisoning prevention and lead hazard control. To identify and eliminate lead source hazards to provide for inspections. Remedies and an all appeals process for real property within the city of Chester. And repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass the bill number six on its last and final reading.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yeah.
Ruth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number seven, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty three. Ordinance number seven of twenty twenty three. And ordinance, and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Repelling Article seventeen forty six entitled defaulted vacant and mortgage property in its entirety. And enacting new Article seventeen forty six of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania nineteen seventy eight. As supplemented and amended entitled defaulted vacant and abandoned real property. To provide for purpose, intent and applicability requiring the registration, inspection. Maintenance and security of certain real property by owners or mortgages. Providing for fees, penalties and enforcement as well as the regulation and reoccupancy of rehabilitated structures. Within the city of Chester, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number seven on its last and final reading.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Bill number nine, first reading was on April twelfth, twenty twenty three. Ordinance number eight of twenty twenty three. And ordinance, and ordinance of the city of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Of the codified ordinances of the city of Chester, Pennsylvania nineteen seventy eight as supplemented and amended. Adopting the two thousand eighteen edition of the International Fire Code. Including appendix chapters A entitled Board of Appeals. Chapter B entitled Fire Flow Requirements for Buildings. Chapter C entitled Fire Hydrant Locations and Distribution. Chapter D entitled Fire Apparatus Access Roads. Chapter E entitled Hazard Categories. Chapter F entitled Hazard Ranking. Regulating and governing the safeguarding of life and property from fire explosion hazards arising from the storage. Handling and use of hazardous substances, materials and devices. And from conditions hazardous to life or property in occupancy of buildings and premises as in, as herein provided. Providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees therefore. And each and all of the regulations, provisions, penalties, conditions and terms of said fire code. Or filed in the office of the Fire Marshal, City of Chester Bureau of Fire. And hereby referred to adopted and made part thereof as fully set out before in this ordinance. Which additions, insertions, deletions and changes. And repealing all or, all other ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
I move that we pass bill number nine on its last and final reading.
I second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Wes?
Yeah.
Ruth?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Um, just want to provide a reminder to the, to the public, if you wish to address um, members of council. Uh, please go over to the podium, sign your name and address um, so that you can address council. Moving along with the agenda, uh, we have a few presentations and we'll start with uh, Commissioner Gretzky and the Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Corporal Kyle Batneyery, front and center. To all who should sell these, see these presents, greetings. Known that the reposing special trust and confidence in the abilities of Kyle Corporal Kyle Batneyery. I do appoint this corporal to the rank of Sergeant. I do hereby order all those of a lesser grade to comply with all orders given by Sergeant Batneyery. And charge Sa- Sergeant Batneyery with authority to carry out these orders given those of higher grade. Given under my hand this twenty-sixth day of April and the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three, congratulations. Absolutely.
Morning, everybody. Born, raised and educated in our city, very proud to be over city, been serving our department since May two thousand and nine. Uh, probably heard me say the same thing to you, my son got murdered beforehand. Promise to lead the department in the right way, fair way, you know, things like this. And uh, hopefully I'll see everybody out there. And more importantly, speak on uh, Sergeant Kyle Batneyery. I know sometimes a lot of uh, citizens won't see him on the street like a Redder Patrol Officer. But I tell you this, I could contest to this, and I'm sure uh, CEO, Mr. Betterby, he said this. Corporal Batneyery, Sergeant Batneyery.
I agree.
I keep moving my neck, um.
Get out of here.
In February of this year, actually February tenth. Um, the city of Chester Police Department uh, asked to participate. And Councilwoman Williams, I gotta give you your props for setting this up. Because it was with the Pennsylvania DMC Youth Law Enforcement Corporation. And it was held at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, Mr. Derek Phillips, you always come through for us, I appreciate it. Uh, but most importantly, Ms. Dana Browser with her students, um. And we did some role playing, we did some talking, we broke off into groups. And we did reverse situations where the students gave us our feedback of what their current. Vision is of law enforcement. And I asked them to submit a project to me and I put them to a challenge and they stepped up to the plate and they did. And reading the barriers and the communication between the students and the police department, it opened my eyes. And I shared it with the police department. But when we went on break, there's a student, he's a junior, Marcus Benson, who's here. Um, pulled me to the side, he did his homework on me, he researched me and I give you your props. Because he said to me, he goes, Commissioner, uh, I heard you like to help out on certain things. I'm on the baseball team or we could use some new uniforms, so we got to talk and. Um, he's not here and to Mr. Darren Laws, it's my guy, he actually helped me uh, put this together. We sat down with the coaching staff, Coach Bell, always comes through whenever I need to talk to him. And I want to let you know with this core of people, and Dana, I'm gonna ask you to come up here and speak and uh, Marcus you also. They asked for us to get uniforms. Now, before anyone tries to throw a sneak this, this money came from my friends, nothing out of the city's budget. So between myself and Mr. Phillips, have you come up here?
Yeah.
Marcus, Dana, the coaching staff. Don't get shy now, you had a lot of mouth from here at the Boys and Girls Club. I just want to let you know, Marcus. Dana, I'd actually say a few words.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Dana Bowser from Chester, our Blue School District. Um, Marcus is one of the students that I've had the honor to build a relationship with over the past year. He's a phenomenal student, he speaks for what he wants. And uh, one day he was talking to me and he said, we need baseball uniforms and I said, so ask for them. And uh, with, with encouragement, like uh, Commissioner Gretzky said, when we had the wonderful. Program over at the Boys and Girls Club sponsored by uh, Councilwoman Williams. Marcus had the opportunity to speak face to face with our superintendent and got, we got with Coach Bell and all the coaches. And Dr. Parkinson said right away, we'll set up a meeting, call Ms. Williams and set up a meeting. Uh, his, his administrative assistant and so we set it up and we all sat, the coaches and. Coach Bell, Dr. Parkinson, Commissioner Gretzky, uh, Phillips, Officer Taylor, a whole bunch of us. And this, where are you? He's standing behind, this young man right here uh, made this happen. So I'm happy to advocate for any of our students and we're happy to be here. And I'm gonna pass the mic to him because this is about him today, here you go, Marcus.
I really just want to say thank you to everybody making this happen. Me and my coaches, we wanted to put Chester baseball back on the map and that's exactly what we want to do this season. Right now, we're four and five, we had the game yesterday to a sad loss. We're gonna come right back at it tomorrow against Chi Chester. I really want to say thank you, Coach Jamal, Coach Waters, Coach Bell. Especially Commissioner and Mr. Derek, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Um, yes, congratulations, uh, good work by uh, Commissioner and the Boys and Girls Club. Of the Chester High School coaches, um, the players, athletic director, Councilwoman Williams. Always doing something to give into the communities, so good work, Councilwoman. Uh, moving along um, to the next item on our agenda, seems like everybody giving out money, so we giving out money too. Um, so I, I, over the last few weeks, uh, myself, members of council, uh, members of the Amachi Program. Um, Mr. Jamar Daniels, Ms. Brittany Hells, uh, we've worked to. Provide uh, some financial assistance to organizations throughout this community. Uh, that directly affects uh, our youth. And it's not just with dance, it's not just with sports. Uh, today, uh, we're giving uh, funds to Camp Encouragement. Uh, the WAM Tripoli Youth Found- uh, Foundation. Uh, that has been doing great work in the city of Chester for many, many years. Across many different avenues and categories. Uh, but most speci- more specifically, uh, Camp Encouragement is a foundation that. Brings in the youth and provides them with some, some guidance and assistance and really a, a shoulder or a crush to lean on as they're going through some grief. And that's grief within their family, no matter if it's imprisonment uh, through some type of a health-related issues or family-related issues. And Ms. Pat, who is well-known throughout this community, really is always someone who has been opening up her doors to young and old. Um, and just really being able to provide a sense of therapy and a sense of uh, of area where people can come in to and be able to vent. To her and her team and, and, and hopefully be able to change the mindset or whatever someone is going through. So today, I think it's ninety-five hundred dollars, but today we're going to present, present a check to Ms. Pat. Uh, at Camp Encouragement for the great work that they've been doing in this community for so many years, so Ms. Pat, can you come up?
Thank you. Nineteen years ago, my son was murdered here in the city of Chester and. It has really changed the life of my entire family. Um. From my son's death, we created Chester City United, which is a soccer program that we have here in the city of Chester. And right now, um. They're playing games on Saturdays and they're excited and I'm over the top, you know, my, that's. When my son was alive, he always used to cry about the fact that he could never play in front of his family and friends because soccer was not. Here in the city of Chester. So it's such a great accomplishment to be able to say that on Saturdays. Families can come out in the city of Chester and see their children play. Camp Encouragement was created because of my daughter and the fact that she had lost her brother and. She had no place to go, there was no place for her to come and talk about her issues and. so I tried to give this camp, God gave me this vision. And he, um, told me I needed to do this, but I tried to give it to three people. And nobody would do it, so I said, okay, okay, God, if you gave it to me, you have told me that this is what I want you to do. So I went back, got my master's degree at Newman, Newman, and created Camp Encouragement. Camp Encouragement, with the help of Susan Dennis and Lisa Dennis. We, uh, during that time, we did a bereavement program here in the city of Chester. And we were just all sitting around talking about it and Susan and Lisa said, Pat, let's get started, let's just do it. I said, I just graduated, now you wanna do it? So we started, three days, four kids, and now we're two weeks with twelve to fifteen kids. And we've been doing Camp Encouragement for nine years. Next year will be ten years that we've been doing Camp Encouragement. So I just want to thank everybody who has been, uh, a part of this walk with me. My husband, who, uh, at the time, he was my significant other and he has been traveling this walk with me for over nineteen years, when my son was murdered nineteen years ago. And he saw the ups and downs and the ins and outs of me and my feelings and all over the place. So I always want to recognize him for just being there for me. But the city of Chester and the trust that they had given me to be able to bring their kids in and to love up on them and give them some sense of hope. Because one young man I had at Camp Encouragement, he lost three gentlemen in his family and all through murder was his uncle, father, and his, and, and his grandfather. Susan, correct me if I'm wrong. And he wanted to commit suicide because at school, they had a program where they had to bring young men in, you know, as a father's day. And he didn't have a significant, a man in his family that he could bring to the father program at the school. So he, he came to Camp Encouragement and we loved up on, uh, loved up on him. And at the Boys and, um, at the Boys and Girls Club program that I was at with the Elks, he was there. And he ran over to me and he said, Ms. Pat, I'm so glad to see you. I was like, started crying, he was crying, we was hugging each other. And I said to him, how are you doing? He said, I'm really doing good and I'm gonna tell my mom that I saw you and I want to come back to the program. So, uh, we have a counselor, a licensed therapist that comes every day of the camp to give the children an opportunity to talk about their issues. And we do fun things, we, this year, we're going to the Franklin Institute and we've gone to, we teach the children how to, uh, ride a, we go horseback riding. We run to the zoo, we've done a lot of things for the kids, but the main focus is that we, uh, give them counseling. So thank you to the city of Chester, everyone that's here, everyone that's been a, a part of this walk with me over the last nineteen years, thank you so, 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 so much.
Thank you. Um, and just so the public is aware, those funds are via a grant, uh, a PCCD grant, uh, with the Amachi Program, so. Uh, next, we will have a COVID-nineteen update by the Health Department.
Good morning.
Sorry, good morning. I'll get back to it.
Um, according to the Pennsylvania Department of Health, there have been twelve positive COVID-nineteen cases reported in Chester in April so far. Research experts believe that the number of positive cases is undercounted due to at-home testing and residents who may have mild symptoms that do not get tested. The CDC states that people in Delaware County may choose to mask at any time due to the low COVID-nineteen transmission. Please visit vaccines.gov to find the most up-to-date appointment availability for flu shots and COVID-nineteen vaccines and boosters. We encourage everyone to consider getting the vaccine and booster shot if you haven't already. The FDA announced that certain groups are now eligible for another, for another dose of the bivalent COVID vaccine. And the updated shots are going to completely replace the monovalent shots. City Hall is partnering with Woodland Pharmacy and the Black Equity Coalition to sponsor a vaccine booster flu and shingle shot clinic on Wednesday, May tenth, from eleven to one, in the City Hall computer room. Pre-registration for the VSP Vision Care Program on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth is available, is available now. To pre-qualify and schedule an appointment, please contact Rosetta Carter at six one oh four four seven 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 zero zero, extension seven nine five five. If anyone wants more information on the VSP program or the Medicaid renewal process, we have flyers at the podium. City Hall is also offering free, free blood pressure screenings in the lobby today from eleven to one. Finally, COVID-nineteen home tests and Narcan can be picked up from the tables downstairs. Thank you.
KLE, Trevina, I apologize if I said incorrectly. Um, we ask that you all keep your comment under three minutes or less, respectful of everyone's time, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, this is a early one, what a encouraging council meeting. Y'all had me crying back there, literal tears running down my face. Um, I wanted to thank the teachers and the coaches too of the students, um, Mr. Phillips and the commissioner. Couple of those people have left, but it's just incredible to see people rally together. Um, and especially on behalf of our kids, like, there is nothing more touching than that to me. Um, they're our future and to see us come together for them is so symbolic, um, of really how we should all be, all time. Oh, my address is three fourteen East Twenty-Fourth Street, I always forget that. Um, so I wanted to start my comment, um, thanking, uh, Councilwoman Ruth um, for standing with the residents and our state rep Carol Kazee announcing, uh, mayoral candidate Jeff Brown's comments about sending Philadelphia's trash to Chester. There was a beautiful march organized by, um, Chester residents concerned for quality life and led by Ms. Zuleen, that circle, um, this weekend. And it was just a great display of our community coming together with neighboring communities to say what we will and will not tolerate here in Chester. Um, and just again, on behalf of the kids, we have to advocate for cleaner air, for these things that kind of fall in the background when we have these much larger issues, but at the end of the day, they have to be around in order for them to benefit from anything that we're doing here. So, um, really awesome to see everyone be able to come together. Um, I am, I'm sorry to see the mayor's not here today because the second part of my, uh, comment is to address a quote that he pulled from my public comment last meeting in like his ending remarks. So I started my public comment saying that I was going to refer to we in my comment as us as residents and council as representative of us as residents. Because I truly believe we cannot dig ourselves out of bankruptcy or any of these other issues without coming, without everyone coming together. So in his closing remarks, he said, so, someone said something about my way or the highway, and I don't know if that was addressed towards me, but and I was the only person who used that phrase, it, it wasn't in my prepared remark. Um, it was kind of just on the fly, so I want to be really clear, it wasn't directed towards anyone in particular. I really think this is a fight we need to be in together, but I am really disappointed that I said we and the mayor heard me. So, uh, lastly, I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting our current council members and, uh, current candidates for a debate yesterday. Thank you to Councilwoman, uh, Williams and Councilman Morgan for participating. It's always really great for us as residents to be able to hear from, um, people who want to or are currently representing us. Um, thank you to the candidates, Tamika Gibson and Fred Green as well for their participation. Uh, there's another debate tonight for our mayoral candidates at seven PM, just wanted to make sure it's on everyone's calendars. It's, um, live streamed on the League of Women Voters YouTube. And I just encourage everyone to check them out, get educated before we come out and vote on May sixteenth. So thank you guys so much for your time, have a great day.
Thank you, um, Brian Williams. Restroom. Okay, um, Mr. Jamil Copman.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
Oh, my name's Jamil Copman, from seven twenty-five Land Street in Chester. I'm not a speaker, so I'm just a doer. Um, I'm inviting y'all, uh, to an anti-violence program in Summit, on, in Summit on this Thursday at, um, June four thirteen, um, that we're, um, partner with. Going, um, going on Summit with the youth. We have different vendors out there for that day, um, if y'all would like to come out and be a part of it. Also, I will be doing, me and a couple of different partners will be doing, um, a ball against violence, June the third, at Southern Street Basketball Court. It's gonna be a big event, that we're just trying to bring the community as a whole together, um. What I'm doing is, is a basketball, different basketball tournaments from ages eight to twenty-one. Different basketball tournaments will be going on there, we're gonna have different vendors going out there, we'll have a whole lot of music out there, it'll be a great day. I'm trying to basically bring it back to what I did a couple of years ago, I did, um, I did a, I did, I did a big march within the city. It was Concerned Citizens of Chester, we did a march, we had one part from the east side, one part from the west side. We all met up, um, at the, um, at the high school, it was a big event. I'm trying to, we trying to bring things like that back to the city without the funding. We just, a lot of different partners is coming together and making things happen. Each month, we will be doing a different event with this city. Well, with throughout the city, we'll be doing different events throughout the city. Um, one of the other things that we'll be, we'll be doing is, we'll be doing a foul, we will be, we putting something together, we'll be doing a foul mile, a foul, a foul mile walk. And we want to help sponsor the track thing, all the proceeds that they will go to the track thing to help, um, to help them do anything that they need to do. So like I said, we're doing different things within the city and hopefully y'all can be a part of it and come on out and, um, and enjoy y'all's, enjoy y'all's own.
What time Thursday?
This, um, Thursday is at six o'clock. It's from six to nine, we will have, um, we'll have food and refreshment there that day.
Do you have a flyer?
Yes, um, I will bring another flyer back over or send, or send it out to y'all.
And please send it to Amanda.
Yes. So that's what we're doing, we're putting a flyer together, like I said, about the, um, the June third event at the, on Southern Street Basketball Courts. That's, that will be from eleven to seven down there. And y'all, the flyers are getting made right now, so that will be out, um, hopefully next week, flyers will be out today, that is that.
Just can you make, just, just make sure you coordinate with the city of Chester on it, permitting and assistance.
Everything's arena, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, Samira Hammonds. Okay, you want to speak to me after? Uh, Brian Williams.
Good morning, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm here in behalf of, a lot of things going on in Chester. Like, number one, all these raggedest cars park all over the streets. You come down by me on Hayes Street, cars everywhere. I come there, I can't even park in the front of my own door. I've been living there fifty-seven years, damn near time to get up out of there. Because if you tell you had no parking place, you might as well leave. Another thing, like Chester. Y'all got a thing, tell me that water thing coming off your house, come from Maryland, down there on those, uh, watching. Joyous time, I tell you we got joyous time. They try to get it everywhere. Why y'all bring that thing here and them fully ain't got no tools to work with? I clean up all the drain down here with my, but them things stink. You got to go in them drain and clean it out, either dump it back, align it. A lot of people got jobs and don't know what it's about. You can do a lot of things to make things happen and make it smell better. Uh, in the city of Chester down by me, you can get up, some morning, it smell like antifreeze. Some morning you get up, it smell like different things. If y'all gonna run this thing and, and sit down, just quit sitting down in your hole y'all all the time. And get out there on your G O B and try to make something happen, but y'all ain't doing that. Ain't no way in the world, we supposed to be living like that in a small city, and we're dominant black. We're dominant black. Y'all go this morning, I ain't see y'all rank nail one of them black police. And I think we got something here. Ain't no way in the world, we in a dominant black city and everything Caucasian. Y'all, this, last time I been over here, y'all put all that on. It put fires and stuff on the same way. One black boy was dreadlocked, I ain't seen him yet on the street, but I think he might be still here. One white girl, when you could have put three or four girls in there. But they're minority too. See, I know what's minority, what ain't, but I just run jobs. And the last thing we need to do here in Chester, we need a skating rink, we need movers, we don't even much have a flip to get on them. If you go to bed after six o'clock, you can't get a donut. That's better. When I first come to Chester in sixty-five, it was booming. It was booming. Nixon and all of them come in and walk around Chester. Even much y'all in there move pen landing from down here, take it up to the pen landing. That been long since in Chester, down there on Pen Street. Y'all got this soccer team named after Philadelphia. Y'all got this, I seen him breaking ground somewhere this week, last week. What that for? Tell us. That's why I'm over here for some amount. What, what they breaking ground for? They just doing something for these little black children to have somewhere to go?
Mr. Brian, I was waiting for you to get all your questions out so we can make sure we answer them, because you, this is a three minutes, so I wondered if you got them all out.
You let them old fellas talk as long as they want to look like to me.
No, you didn't hear me.
I ain't questioning, I ain't saying nothing to tell you, I ain't saying nothing against you. I was speaking for the West thing.
All right, so, so.
Now, it's y'all.
Are you answering the questions now?
Yeah.
All right, so, um, the, the Philadelphia Union, they broke ground on, uh, a development project that they're doing for the youth.
Yeah.
So do they, so it's going to be a, a, a sports complex that's going to have some, some fields there, some basketball courts, a fieldhouse, some training facilities. Um, so that's what the groundbreaking was for. Uh, you spoke about raggedy cars on Hayes Street, are those cars legal?
I don't know.
Okay, have you contacted the police department?
I don't, I don't see, many times I come here to meet.
Okay.
I don't have to call the police ever.
Have the cars ever moved?
Some of them don't move at all. Some of them ain't moving, ain't never yet.
All right, I'll, uh, we'll see what we can do on that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they're.
Yeah, because I'm tired coming and they don't clean up at all. I can take the red up there where the, the boat movers used to be. It, I looked in the alley the other day, I stopped and get out and walk down through the alley, it's a disgrace. That's overtime. Well, I remember me, overtime here on Friday evening, it used to be something. You put on your suit and necktie and dress up to come over here on Saturday, on Friday evening. But now, ain't nowhere to go. But now, ain't no way to go. That's better. You go over there where, where, where the state movers used to be. That used to be something. Back then, we couldn't go in there two planes. And they were leaping and different things. We couldn't go in there. Special nights. But you don't know nothing about that. You're too young. Yeah. But y'all want to be on the top of thing, but you got to do, you got to work to get on top of thing. Now, you take like down by me. Ain't no way in the world a mall is supposed to be looked like that. You got to clean the alley down first to get to the city, get in the street. The sweeper used to be down there every week. You know why? Jack Nickere in there. Joe Val in there. Which, I can tell you everybody lived down there. Well, I had to go to them one time. They was Republican, I was a Democrat. They tell me I was no good to them, but they do what I tell them. But they know I come in the meeting and bring a nothing. They don't want that. Yeah, and once you make them look bad, they get feel to do their job. And we supposed to have a man up in Hasburg or Stilton or somewhere. Who that guy? See, I don't know these guys except in here no more. This tell me a boy over here running from man named Roots. I don't even know who he is, if it, like that one today. I don't know him.
Mister Brown?
Huh?
You have any more questions for us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm answering question now. Yeah.
But Mister Brown
What y'all gonna send somebody down there?
Respectfully, Mister Brown, there's other individuals that has to have public comments as well.
Well, I, I want them, I want them to enjoy themselves and do what the best they can.
Well, they, they, they trying to get their public comments happy, but
It's the man thing I come
Alright, I'm listening. This is the man, this is, this is Mister Brown.
What are y'all doing about my little grandbaby? When she get shot on pieces of metal? And now lawman, a now city councilor, mayor, are nothing coming to my house and say what they doing to make a difference? Are you able to, you ever talking to their children? My little grandbaby, she died up in here ten times and told y'all, ain't nobody come and tell me nothing. Now she going to school and she have nervous breakdown. She's a dumb kid coming in, she jump up and run. She said, call me up there last Tuesday for her. Call me Friday for her. She playing like she was blind, she couldn't see. That's hurting them.
Mm-hmm.
But ain't none of y'all come to me yet and tell me what y'all doing to make a difference? You should've been telling. I can call Jim Kennedy way in Philadelphia. I can call the boy in Delaware, Thominoma in there. Just come right to me. Just, just tell me who I should see. I don't want to go over y'all head.
Mister, Mister Brown, I know you've come in recently, I'm thinking, spoke about that. And from my knowledge, and I think you may have spoken to maybe individuals within the police department, some, or the family may have spoken to those individuals. I can't really speak on what's going on or what, or those things that has happened. I know some of the progress that we've made throughout the community to try to decrease the, the violence and the crime throughout the city. Um, but we can most certainly have additional conversation as needed, um, to, to further help yourself and the family, uh, hopefully get to get to some, uh, resolution.
I run with my car. I went through the red light next car here.
You went through the red light?
And they give me a ticket, I'm getting them. I went, I tell the cops and everybody
Please, don't do that, please, Brown.
That truck gonna shoot my kid.
Mm-hmm.
I went through that highway. He went up there in the new house. You know what I tell me? The truck was
Mister Brown?
Huh?
We have a meeting that we have to continue with.
Okay, I, I appreciate what you got to do.
And I respectfully ask if we can continue with
Man, I'd like to know when y'all coming down there with a truck and back and clean out the
So, what, what alleyway is it? We're gonna send them down there. Tell me what alleyway.
Six and Hayes.
Six and Hayes, I got you.
The three tones.
Alright.
And the back, back in the back.
Alright, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
I got you, Mister Brown.
I want to clean out.
Alright. Um, so, uh, so we're gonna move forward. Yes. So with that, um, no, you all have something. You have something, don't you, Councilwoman? Or no? I'm the deputy. Yes, one moment, one moment.
Good morning, Honorable
Can you, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, sure. Good morning, Honorable Deputy Mayor Morgan and fellow council members and, and members of the community. I just want to say thank you to Deputy Mayor and fellow council members for passing the lead ordinance. Because that's a serious ordinance for our, for the City of Chester. Because many times, because of the lead that's in the houses, young kids that are housed there are being poisoned. And what happens is that when they go to the schools or it's time for them to start school, uh, what happens is sometime they have difficult time learning because that lead is reversible, you know, irreversible. So, I just want to say thank you because I think that's the start. And also where our kids are being labeled where they can't learn, it's an opportunity that we can stop that. So, that was, that was very major. And also, I just want to, on behalf of the Health Department, I want to extend, um, uh, many thanks to Ms. Pat. She's doing a tremendous job for many years. And since the council gave you a check for ninety-five hundred, I'm gonna ask my friends to make it ten thousand by giving you additional five hundred dollars, okay? Because five hundred dollars is nothing compared to ninety-five hundred dollars. So, but the key is cooperation and working, collaboration and working with people. And I've known you for many years, and I've known all what you've been doing in this community. So, I'd just like to say thank you for doing the work you're doing as well as council. Because as was mentioned today, uh, this was a great meeting. And I'm a believer that when we come together, put our minds together, things can happen, and then the monies will follow. So, again, today was just evidence that the money will follow. I, I, I thank you. I thank you all. And I thank God. I've been praying for my city a long, long time. And I believe God is erring in prayer. And lastly, I'd just say to you, Mister Brown, that if your daughter's having mental problems, you know, your granddaughter, I'll be more than happy to talk to you to talk about the available services, okay? Yeah, and you know that if I say I was gonna do something, I'll do it, okay? And thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, briefly, please. We're gonna keep on moving forward.
I just want you to know that we do have a very important election coming up. I'm not on any side. I just want you to know that please tell your friends and everybody that tonight, the League of Women, I believe they're doing the mayoral, mayoral candidates, am I correct? And then on Thursday, N double A C P and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority along with great council, we are doing an in-person, um, forum at the League Center at six o'clock. And we will be doing both the city council slots. I think there's four candidates and there are two seats. So, please come and face them, face to face and ask questions. And then, um, the second half of the program would be interviewing the, um, mayoral candidates. And there's three, and there's one seat. So, it's at the League Center tomorrow night, six o'clock sharp. We need every minute. So, please come out, tell your friends, thank you, Mister Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Thank you. Councilman Roots?
Good morning. Couple of comments on today's meeting. The first one I'll start with is Chester High Baseball. Really exciting to see them get some love. I played on the Chester High Baseball Team. And I go to the games, Coach, uh, Coach Martin, Coach, Coach Waters, they're great guys. They're trying to put a great program together. They play on one of the best-kept fields, uh, as far as landscaping is concerned in all of the county, so we're really proud of them. Uh, speaking of baseball, on Saturday was opening day at Crozier Park for the Jackie Robinson League, which is basically sponsored by the Labor's Local Four Thirteen. I give those guys a lot of credit, along with, uh, the Recreation Department here for preparing their fields. Their fields were just trashed before they made the arrangements to get them looking like Fields of Dreams. We also had a local artist, E. Graham, who took it upon himself to remove the graffiti that was on the storage container and turned it into a tribute to baseball and Jackie Robinson. That was amazing. Uh, Pulaski Playground, and that is not the Pulaski School on the west side. Pulaski Playground is on the east side. Ethan McDowell, last year, we made some arrangements to get a new, um, it's not a new basketball court, but to redo the basketball court there. It's one of those forgotten playgrounds in the city. So, I really encourage you guys to drive by and see the progress that's being made. The blacktop is down, the basket supports are up. We still have an issue with the type of backboards that are going to go up, but the entire city needs love, and that was a forgotten playground. So, in the next week or two, you're gonna see that, uh, basketball court be finished. It's a great place for our kids to play on the far, far east side of town. I am all smiles today. Nothing can, nothing can make me upset or mad because before I came here, I was at the Edgemont Scholars Academy, visiting the first grade class of Ms., uh, Breana Greslin. And Ms. Addison Brockle is a student at Widener University and involved in the Community Engaged Teacher Education Program. And I really loved that group. I sat with the first graders for a half hour. We had a bunch of fun talking about what happens with water when it goes down the drain because they wanted to know my, my, my jobs. So, when one kid said, you mean number two goes right to the river? I says, no, there's a company in between that cleans it up. So, we talked about that, and we talked about city council. And, uh, I always like to use the example that a young kid asked me when I asked him, do you know what a city councilman is? And they, they were just looking around, and one kid said, is it like Santa's Helper? So, that's a great way to explain what a city councilman is. So, that was a lot of fun. And lastly, on the same topic of schools, I was really happy to see that Mayor and Council approved the street name right there in front of the Frederick Douglass Schools. Those of us who are old enough and know that it used to be the Black High School in the city. Those of us in my age group, it was the Junior High School in the city. And it's great to see this private school, private Christian school operating out of that building. It's a great, great place for learning. I think there's not a classroom that has more than fifteen students. Mister and Mrs. Bowdery, who practically run the school, are amazing people. And just to see the, the black history figure of Frederick Douglass being recognized in the street here in the City of Chester is just amazing. So, that's all I have to share today.
And Council, Councilwoman?
Good morning, everyone. It's good to be back. I've been out for about six weeks with, um, recovering from shoulder surgery. I'm a bionic woman. I had my shoulder replaced. And, um, I want to thank my colleagues and the community, especially my family, for their support of me during this time that I was out. I had a lot of people from the community who called me and offered help, you know, to see what they could do. And I really, really appreciate the love that you show me on a consistent basis. Um, Pat, you are the girl, and I admire you. I, I really appreciate all that you and your family have done for the community and how you took your grief and you changed it into a positive for our children here in the city. And I really appreciate all that you do. You've always been someone that I have admired. Um, Mister Brown William, you know that if you need us to come down there and clean up, we've been down there and clean, to clean up before. And Mark and I will get together and come down today, okay? And, uh, see what needs to be done around your area in terms of the cleanup, okay? And then, um, any cars that we see, um, the, we need to hear from you about the cars that don't move, you know, because then we can report that to the police department. Anything on the street, it gets reported to the police department and they tag it, they have to tag it, and then they'll have it removed, okay? Alright. And, um, yesterday, Mark Alexander and I, we were, um, um, out and about in the community, and we got a phone call from a community member about illegal dumping that was being done at, at that very moment down on Parker Street, uh, right at the railroad trestle before you get to Sixth Street, between Fifth and Sixth on Parker Street. So, we had a company that was cleaning out, um, an old, um, truck. And, uh, so Mark and I went down there and, uh, it was a young guy. And, um, he kind of got smart a little bit, you know? But, um, we contacted the police and they came out. And, um, um, I wanted the debris removed right away because our kids were gonna get ready to get out of school. And they had to walk down, you know, on that side of the street from school, and they had boxes and other types of debris all over the sidewalk. And the young guy said, well, this is Amtrak, you know, belongs to the Amtrak. I said, no, this is the city right away. It belongs to the city, and you have to remove it. I wanted it removed right away, but they told me they couldn't get anybody out until seven o'clock. Mister Alexander, um, till seven o'clock, which I felt they had, should have moved it right away. The guy who had it out there, he put it there by himself. So, I said, well, you, by yourself, you can put it back on your property, you know? But he got smart, so, you know, the officer who came out, um, fined them. And, um, but when we went back today, the debris is gone. So, I said all that to say is that we need, if you see someone in the act of just dumping somewhere, we need you to call right away. Call right away so that we can get out there, you know, and try to catch these perpetrators. Yes, we have cameras all over the place, you know, but sometimes our cameras don't always get a, a, a tag number. You know, we can't see the people's faces, but we try to do our best. So, we need the community to help us, you know, let us know. And if I'm out there, the mayor had to tell me to stop. I know. He told me to stop, you know, um, approaching people, so I always try to have someone with me, you know? But please help us with this because, yes, the city does look bad when you have all these individuals. And there, there are people from right here in the city who are doing it, you know? And then, of course, we have some people who come outside, like, um, from outside contractors and what have you, and they dump. So, you know, we need your help. Please call us. And a lot of people have my number, my, um, the business cell, so just call me. You know, I'm always on the clock, Saturday night, early in the morning, right Ken? Six o'clock?
Earlier.
Okay, but thank you very much, and again, thank you for all the love shown to me during these past six weeks of recovery.
Councilwoman Williams?
Hi. I'd like to say good morning to everyone. Uh, in reference to the program, they, they caught me by surprise today. But in reference to that program, they had Mister, Mister Laws had a program downstairs one day. So, I said, I want to go see what they're talking about. So, when I went downstairs, the young man that was speaking at this program told Mister Laws, he said, I know her. He said she was the one that told me that I was not coming down here singing them songs and cussing at my children. He was a rapper. And I was like, oh, okay. He's the one that introduced me He's the one that introduced me to that program. And the program was developed by his father. So he gave me the information and following the chain of command, I took it to the mayor. And I asked the mayor, I said, I want you to talk to this gentleman, his name is Sheriff Washington? And he lives in, he lives in Merlin. So he had a, um, little tape of what he does, what they do and everything. So then I asked the mayor, I said, can I, can, can I do that, can I, you know, is it all right if I bring it to the City of Chester? And the mayor said, yeah. I said, um, so I called him and got in touch with him. And he set me up and there, but it's registered in I Pennsylvania Department of Education. So how did we miss that? Um, so we had, so I had to get everything str- uh, set up and everything. So I went over to Girls and Boys Club. Come here, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Phillips. I, I went to see Mr. Phillips. When I went in there that day, I was very, very impressed and really, really thankful and thanking the Lord. Mr. Phillips has so many young people over there at the Girls and Boys Club after three. You wouldn't believe it, I need your, I need, I need people in Chester to go over there and see what Mr. Phillips is doing. When people are saying, oh, we don't have this and we don't, that's not true, that's not true. And so, once I set it up with Mr. Phillips, I went to the Chief of Police. And with my other officer. This, this Taylor's name. Yes, yes, come here, yes. The, the Chief of Police and this officer helped me and stayed with me and our students all day while Mr. Washington did the program. And I thank you because you didn't have to. And the young people, they were very impressed, very impressed, they talking about it now. Matter of fact, some other school want it now. And we're gonna do one, we're gonna do one the sixth of June. But the young people were so impressed and it's, it, it's nice for them to get to know y'all. See, because we knew our police. We didn't do bad thing because we knew our police, our police was right on the street with us, they lived in our neighborhood. Commodore Harris, Grady Marion and all, and we lived, they lived in our neighborhood. And when they see us doing something bad, they didn't take us over to police station and try to get us a record or anything. They took us and they talked to us and then they took you home. Now what happened once you got home? That was your problem. And the parents, the parents stood their grounds and did what they need to do. That's gonna be another subject, okay? But I just wanna thank you for being so helpful to me that day and them young people. Now they done went and told everybody, so now we gotta have some more. And I do have their certificates. So we're gonna have a day that I have them come over and we present them with their certificates. And again, all, all, all I wanna say is let's stop criticizing each other. And we work together to raise our children and help our children here in the City of Chester to be what they wanna be. We, we, we grown, we done done what we wanted to be, they don't have to be out there in them prisons. They don't have to be out there if we adults, we adults work together with everybody, okay? I don't like it when I have to go out to prison. And nine times out of ten, they not gonna let me in, but they, then they, they, they do. But I'm just saying, no, but no, no, no. It's a, it's a, it's a different world out there, we gotta help our children, the education system gotta change. These young people, I watched on TV the other day, this young lady was fourteen years old studying to be a nurse. So you, you've gotta find a new way of teaching, Marvin Gaye, you need a new way of teaching. Everything gotta change, we, we're, we're, you're in a different world, these, these are space kids, it, it's different, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, um. So I just have a few, uh, quick updates, uh, Riverfront Festival on May sixth, I don't have the flyer in front of you, but I know the flyer has been posted downstairs in our lobby and also on social media and the television station. But there's a, a Riverfront Chester Festival on May sixth. Uh, just wanna again give, uh, just kudos and acknowledgements to the Boys and Girls Club for the, the great work that they're doing in the community. I know they have a event coming up this Saturday, uh, fundraising event for the Boys and Girls Club. Continue to look at, uh, our Chester City website for, uh, um, job positions and hirings. Uh, I know we have a few vacancies, we currently have posted for the summer full program, uh, vacancies. I think they're looking for a supervisor, manager, some, uh, supervisors within a park, within that program. So please go on our website and, and apply and or send that to someone who you know is looking for a, a job this summer. Uh, it is a seasonal temporary job, it's not permanent, um, just keep that in mind, but it is available, uh, as well. And we do have some full-time positions available as well. Uh, tax payments, um, it's tax season, um. So if you're a resident property owner, please, uh, pay your taxes on time. Uh, the thirtieth, April thirtieth is the last day to pay and receive the two percent discount. Because the thirtieth is on a Sunday, you have up until May first to pay to get the two percent discount. But after that, you gotta pay that base rate. So please come in this week or by Monday to receive that two percent, two percent discount on your tax payment. Um, the American Rescue Plan, so we've been having, we always have weekly meetings regarding the, the American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, we have a American Rescue Plan Oversight Committee with three members of the community on, on, on that committee. Um, we had a meeting, let's say last week, but we also had one yesterday as well, uh, as we were preparing for not only the reporting for the first quarter of twenty twenty-three, but also, uh, for our first, uh, engagement meeting with the community, uh, in twenty twenty-three as well. We're looking to do one i- if, uh, in June, but if June doesn't work as far as timing, uh, we may do it in Ju- we'll, we'll definitely, definitely do it in, uh, July. So we'll make sure to get that information out to everyone, uh, so that you can most certainly be a part of that, uh, meeting and understand the work that has been done thus far and what, uh, we have on the horizon for the community. And my last thing is just about for all of us, mayor and council, the public as well, uh, just fact check. Um, oftentimes there are individuals that put information out to our public, into our community and it's misleading, it's not factual. Um, and we need to make sure that us as a, a mayor council be able to tell our story consistently, uh, but also, uh, tell the truth, um, to those residents and have the residents be able to tell the truth to their neighbors, their friends as well. Um, so it starts with us, um, but we just need the, uh, the community to follow suit, uh, on that. I say it often, but there's too many people critiquing with no credentials. And, and oftentimes it's unfortunate, but those people with no credentials or doesn't choose to, uh, find the resources or the facts of the resources, they just go out there and say whatever they want to say. And they know that these, that's unfortunate that sometimes our individuals or our friends may take that and run with it without actually opening up the book and really read what's inside of it, so. Uh, with that, uh, this was a great meeting, I'm glad you all didn't hound me. You're right, Ms. Rosetta, you're right, Ms. Rosetta, that's, I, I appreciate you. Autism Walk, that's right. April twenty-ninth, this Saturday, we have an autism walk here in the City of Chester. Uh, we've had somewhere over four hundred and fifty people registered. However, I know there's tons of people that's gonna show up because they did not register and that's fine. So if you did not register, um, I think the registration opened at eight thirty AM. The walk is intended to start at ten AM. Um, and it's gonna be fun, uh, with all of the kids and families there. Uh, we're probably providing a lot of awareness and education around autism, but also around other, other health, uh, concerns that individuals may have. So please, please, please come on out, April twenty-ninth, this Saturday, from ten AM to one PM, if you have not registered, come out earlier. She just gave me some bad news and said we was gonna, we had a good council meeting, she said it's supposed to rain, so. Um, also be on the lookout if there is a rain day, I think we look up, be on the lookout if there's a rain day, if we have to switch it, uh, depending on what the weather says. Um, but again, April twenty-ninth, if you, if you're not able to come, if you know someone who has autism, please, please send them our way. But with that, I wanna thank the Health Department, I wanna thank Stephanie Hall, I wanna thank the committee, I wanna thank Ms. Dana Bowser, the Chesapeake Island School District and so many more of the individuals who came to those meetings and really just lent a hand. I think we started this conversation maybe sixty days ago, somewhere around there. And I, I, I truly believe it's gonna be a big success and it's just gonna be something that we wanna do on an annual basis, so. With that, not hearing or seeing any other public comments, this council meeting is now adjourned, thank you.